Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting today is Tuesday, April 18, 2023, and the time is now 7:02. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 8, 2022, issues of The Nutley Sun, The Herald News, and The Star-Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for March 21, 2023, and March 22, 2023, which was the budget workshop. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petrakko.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
That's it for minutes, Mayor.
We're gonna skip around the agenda tonight. We have a couple guests, and we have some people we're going to honor tonight. So Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we don't typically get crowds like this. We have a very auspicious group with us this evening, a bunch of ladies that we are just so very proud of. Whatever we think they've peaked, and they've accomplished everything that they could accomplish, they just dig down a little bit deeper and keep on going. They are just phenomenal, and we are just so very proud of you. So I had the honor this evening of offering this resolution on behalf of all of the commissioners. Whereas the girls' competition cheer team has enjoyed an outstanding competition season, hosting a five-time division championship title and a grand championship title for the 2023 season. And whereas the members of the girls' competition cheer team are Lena Agib, Chloe Bay, Kyle Achua, Zoe Davis, Gianna Delaney, Leah Durico, Jomali Duran, Kaitlyn Grogan, Dylan Jasnowitz, Morgan McCann, Grace Miller, Lily Molinaro, Grace Palumbo, Charlotte Romanowski, Stella Smiragliulo, Alana Snyder, Allison Spina, Madison Teppeta, Angelina Traccia, Trinity Valveras, Ava Vasquez, Valentina Velez, Grace Williams. And whereas the head coach, Jamie Artizone, along with high school volunteer Kaitlyn Chua, worked tirelessly to train and guide these athletes. And whereas the members of the girls' competition cheer team are five-time division champions and grand champions for the 2023 competition season, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex join with the citizens of Nutley to honor, congratulate the members and coaches of the girls' competition cheer team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I so proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Before I vote, I just want to extend my congratulations to each of you for all of your hard work. This is not an insignificant accomplishment. And one thing I like to do for everyone who comes here for a significant achievement like this is the hard work isn't over. It's just beginning. I challenge you guys to come back here next year, and every year thereafter, and just continue your drive, your success. And I want to also congratulate all your parents and all your coaches, because they're there with you every step of the way, and you couldn't have done it without them. So congratulations to everyone here tonight. Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
I will add to the comments by Commissioner Kelly. You've achieved a marvelous milestone. Being in competition and then succeeding and coming out on top is a wonderful feeling, and I hope you latch on to that, hold on to it, and you take that through life as you look at your academic career and as you look at other things that you pursue. And I know a lot of that has to do with the relationships that you are forging, the great coaching support that you have, and the backing of your parents. So I too say aye.
Commissioner Petrakko.
I'd like to congratulate all you young ladies, all the friendships you guys make here. You'll follow through the rest of your lives, I'm sure. I haven't been blessed with a daughter, and I know I'm not going to be blessed at this point with a daughter, but I do have a niece that cheered a while ago. And I used to say to her all the time, I would say, Jenna, I walk by the cheerleaders, you're doing your thing, but I look at the score, and Nutley wasn't doing too good that game. So I don't know if anybody always looks at the scoreboard, but she is now attending college in Florida, so her party's still going on, I'm sure. But again, congratulations. It's great to have you guys here. And like I said, look at each other, because yous will be looking at each other for the rest of your lives. Congratulations. I vote aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, just one more final comment. Ladies, tonight, we're here to celebrate you. All right, we're here to celebrate your parents. We're here to celebrate all of your relatives. And just a special shout out to Jamie and Kaitlyn, because things like this don't happen by accident. A lot of hard work and dedication goes in it. And here in Nutley, we have outstanding people. And Jamie and Kaitlyn, from the bottom of all of our hearts, thank you for everything you do. I proudly vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Girls, congratulations to the coaches. Thank you for all the hard work you put in on their behalf. And to the parents who drive them to practices and to the competitions, congratulations. You know, cheerleading is not what cheerleading was when I was in school. It's a lot more athletic, and you girls should really be proud of yourselves. So I proudly vote aye. Before we come up for a picture, girls, or Jamie, want to say anything?
Okay. Good evening. Before I start, I want to thank Jamie and Kaitlyn for being such incredible role models, and for Chloe Bay for writing the speech. I was too lazy, too. Thank you for all the amazing coaches that helped us throughout the season, and one of them being Jamie Artizone. Jamie, you've become a second mom to many of the girls on this team with your continuous love and devotion. Not only were you there for us through the hard times, but you were always there when it came to becoming a team and putting us and putting our best foot forward. Jamie is a coach who could do anything and really showed us there was nothing we couldn't do. She didn't only give us that mentality on the mat, but she gave us that mentality for our goals outside of the Annex Building. She made an amazing team. I'm so disappointed that I won't be able to come back next season, but I know the next team of girls will continue to pull the legacy and our streak of nine total wins from the past two seasons. Another thank you to the parents of our team who came week after week to support our team all throughout New Jersey, giving us such high participation totals. Words cannot describe how thankful we are for all the support and love we've got from this season. And now to the girls. Not only am I so proud of us, but I'm so happy that we've all been able to become a family and so close. Blood, sweat, and tears went through the season, literally. But I'm so proud of what we've been able to accomplish. The support we've all given each other is unmatched, even with our ups and downs. I know deep down, we all love each other, even if that means we cry our eyes out at practice from time to time. I loved cheering with you all and being able to see what true sisterhood is about. I know I've been the biggest handful, so I wanted to say thank you for dealing with me. I'm so proud of us all individually for working hard and creating great friendships and all becoming the best athletes we could be. I've never been happier with a team of girls who've been able to pull out a win week after week. I couldn't ask for a better team. And thank you to the town for letting us have another great season. I hope we can make you proud when it comes to the next years of the Nutley Junior Raiders. Thank you so much.
Please come up for photo, and coaches.
We're all very cool.
We'll give you girls a couple of minutes to clear out, so you don't have to be bored with the rest of our meeting.
That's all I have, just one.
She the one that spoke? She spoke, your niece? Oh.
Trinity Valveras is a money's niece.
We go right to. All right, let's continue with the meeting. We're, again, gonna go a little out of order. And a number of our residents showed up at a meeting a month and a half ago and brought some concerns about the installation of Public Service's smart meters. We reached out to Public Service to come here and give a short presentation and answer any questions for our residents. So Fred, Fred Dom from Public Service.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. And I have to tell you, that has got to be the toughest act ever to follow. So I'm in a tough spot.
Fred, can you just give us your name and your title? Thank you.
My name is Fred Dom. I'm Executive Director, Customer Operations at Public Service Electric and Gas, and I am responsible for our advanced metering infrastructure deployment. So I have responsibilities for all the meters, the network, and all of our use cases. How about that? We better? Okay. So I'm gonna give a brief background of advanced meter infrastructure, PSCNG. Believe it or not, back in 2014, we installed our first smart meters. They were in our large commercial and industrial customers, and that was because the cellular technology at that time became obsolete. In 2020, the Board of Public Utilities, our regulator, required all electric utilities to submit a plan to replace all the standard electric meters with AMI meters. In 2021, in January, the board granted PSCNG approval to start installing the meters, expand the network, and install 22 use cases. To date, we've changed over 770,000 of our 2.3 million meters. In Nutley, we have completed 9,000 of the 13,500 meters. We expect to finish here in Nutley, the end of this year, the beginning of next year. From an industry perspective, just to give a little context, New Jersey is about the 47th state to approve smart meters. There's about 110 smart meters deployed in America right now, which represents about 70% of all the households. So I'm gonna talk about some of the safety of the meters and some of the testing, as we know that's a concern. So our AMI meters meet all the federal communications, the FCC standards, and OSHA Occupational Health and Safety Administration requirements for RF emissions. All of our meters that were installed have been tested and certified by Underwriter Laboratories, UL for a safety standard for electric meters. So if you ever get an electric appliance in your house, and you look in the back, and you see the circle, and it says UL in it, that's United Laboratories, and they certify most all electric appliances in our homes. There's always a concern maybe with the accuracy of the meters. They've met rigorous requirements for accuracy that were developed by the American National Standards Institute, ANSI, for their accuracy. Our manufacturer also tests the meters for accuracy. And when we receive the meters, we also do quality tests for the meters for their accuracy. One of the big concerns when you think about smart meters is them catching fire. So I want to give a little update on that. It's very important to note that early AMI meters involved in fires, one, are not made by our manufacturer, and two, it was an early design made with low-temperature plastic. The meters that we use today are actually made, so, let me just back up. The issue with those meters is, under a high-temperature condition, the plastic would liquefy, and it would ignite. Our meters are made with materials that are non-combustible. So the meters themselves cannot catch fire. And in fact, what we've seen is, there's been fires that were not started by our meters. We had nothing to do with them. But when you actually go, and the meter itself did not burn up, it did not combust. So relative to fire safety, they're very safe. Relative to EMF and RF, AMI meters represent less exposure than baby monitors, microwaves, printers, TVs, cell phones, wireless routers. One thing to keep in mind also is, the AMI meters only communicate every four hours, so six times a day. So it's only during that very short burst of communication that there's an RF signal. And if they're not communicating, there is no RF signal. Customers in New Jersey do have the opportunity to opt out and not have an AMI meter installed. There is a charge, $12, for that, because we're still required to go read that meter. Just for a little context, Atlantic City Electric and JCPL both charge $15 a month for that. Orange and Rockland is 10. If you opt out of both, they're gas and electric, it's $15. So that's kind of, the program is progressing well. We expect to be finished Q3 of 2024. So with that, I wanted to give some facts and a little background there. Be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Commissioners, Commissioner Evans.
I don't think I understand. We received comments from our residents that suggest the meters emit an unsafe level of, I think it's EMF, RF radiation, right? And I actually looked online. There was quite a bit on there about the fact is that, one, they do, and two, proximity is important.
Yes.
The whole community that we're, you don't have acreage between houses, as you know from installing it, houses are close by. So it's not just the impact on your house, it's also your laser. And so you made a comment that said that they meet all of the standards. Can you just shed, what are the actually specific standards? I'm of the understanding is that these meters actually exceed the limits. And in one place I saw, since you can put a screen over the meter that actually reduces the ability of, it doesn't shock, but if you do see, I'm sure you know all of this, right? You've seen all this. Could you comment further as we're going, the safety associated with radiation?
That's my understanding. It's less than 2.4, I believe it's gigahertz for the standard, that industry standard, and that's, again, less than some of the other appliances that were, that were common in the home, routers, baby monitors, and things like that. So we don't set the, we don't set the standards, the FCC, and OSHA sets those standards. Certainly I can follow up and provide commissioners with a set of those standards.
It's a concern, obviously a health concern.
Yes.
Right? And people are concerned about that. You know, if you can, it would be valuable to provide more information as to your particular meter that you're installing, and how, where does it stand in relation to what the safety limit is?
That might be something that's a great suggestion, and we'll look to get that on our website with our frequently asked questions. When we do that, I'll get back with you for that.
Thank you, Fred.
Just to follow up on something that Commissioner Evans said. Because of proximity of our homes here in Nutley, relatively close together for the most part, has anyone looked at the compounding effect? All right. And I understand that, you know, you said that only four times a day is that signal emitted, okay? But what happens when you have homes that are so close together? Does one compound the other? Has anyone ever looked at anything like that?
In the research that I've seen, I haven't seen any information about that effect, because normally what has happened is, one meter will reach out, sends a signal to the next meter, and then that meter's done communicating. Then that meter will send a signal to another one. So it's not that they're all turning on at the exact same time. So then they make their way back. If you've been in your town, if you see on a streetlight, you might see a white box with an antenna, that's a router.
Yes.
And that's what the meters are communicating back to.
So it's a sequential signal going down the line?
Yes.
But again, has anyone looked at the compounding effect of?
No, I don't. I haven't seen any of that information, that if, relative to a compounding effect.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, just on a side note, being a smart meter, what kind of information is it collecting about my house? I'm sorry, the smart meter, what kind of data, what kind of information is it collecting about my house?
It's collecting your interval usage data. So what, the amount of electricity you use every 15 minutes. It also can send back what the voltage is at your meter, right? Do you have 220 volts, 218 volts? If your meter should lose power, it will communicate back that, it's called a last gasp, that your meter lost power. That's how we would know if you're experiencing an outage. When your meter gets restored, it sends a message back that you now have power. It will send, if there's a high-temperature condition at the meter pan, it will send an alert back to us that you've crossed a certain threshold for temperature, and alerting us that there might be a condition out there. But that is voltage, voltage, and then other alerts like that is what it's sending back.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Kelly.
Sure. I don't want, I'll try not to repeat any of the questions that were asked. Some of the concerns, I believe some of the residents voiced when they came to speak to us, was that these meters might be collecting information such as when you turn on a microwave or turn on a television. Does it collect that data?
Just, it's collecting your usage information. There can be, there can be programs that would, based on the usage patterns, indicate what appliance you may use. It's called data disaggregation. It's used a lot of times by energy efficiency programs to see if, how efficient appliances are. We don't have that in any of our use cases right now.
So when the, so the data is just, I guess, the usage, but there's a way for someone or some machine or some program to interpret it, to break out when a TV's going on, or when a microwave is going on, or a refrigerator is going on, or something like that?
There are companies that are just venturing into that now. So I would not say that's one of the reasons we don't have that as a use case right now, because we're not confident in the quality of that information. And go ahead.
Oh, yes. So that's a lot of personal data about individual residents that's available, and it's being transmitted wirelessly. What kind of security is there available to protect the data from potential bad actors who may be in the area trying to scan and take advantage of such data?
So all the information that travels in our network is encrypted. It's all encrypted. It's constantly reviewed to meet cybersecurity standards.
And data has value. So is there any plans now or in the future for PSCNG to sell that data to third parties?
No, we cannot. So the Board of Public Utilities, as part of their data access plan, has been extremely explicit. The customers own their own data, and PSCNG cannot monetize that data, and we cannot make that data available to any third party without, and actually, we can't make it available to a third party. The customer themselves would need to consent to that third party to use that data. BPUs are very clear in that.
So if there is a change to have to come from the Board of Public Utilities, and that'll probably be through a public meeting at some point?
Yes. There's actually an open docket for a data access plan. That's part of the AMI program that hasn't been closed yet. The initial conversations for that, again, I can't emphasize it enough, the board was very clear. Customers own their own data, and the utility can only use it for core utility applications, billing, outage management, things like that.
I think this might be my last question. So with the data, you're able to see, I guess, when there's a spike in the usage, and when there's valleys in the usage, is there any plans by PSCNG during peak hours to charge more for power, and then during non-peak hours, charge less for power?
Yeah. So we do not have any plans for time-of-use rates like that.
Is that something that you could potentially do in the future, and how would residents learn about that?
So that would, so there is, there is always a potential for any utility to change their rate structure. That goes through the Board of Public Utilities approval process, and public hearings through a rate case.
Okay. I don't have any more.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Petrakko.
Yes. I would just like to add also, not to be redundant, you know, everything in America, and especially in our suburb area, which is becoming more like city-like, is cancer, 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 right? So like you said, routers emit, microwaves, TVs, this and that. Why do you think Public Service, you know, this is such an important instrument to be needed in these times? I mean, what was wrong with the old way you guys were doing things? I mean, is it less man-hours to go out and read the meters now? I mean, what's the purpose of it to, you know, and like you said, you're within the standards, and I'm not being a critic at all. I'm just saying, it's like, you know, every time you turn around, it's like we should be looking to eliminate bad, you know, and kind of get more green, in my opinion, but please.
No, it's fair. So one thing, just to be clear, was the Board of Public Utilities that mandated all of the utilities in New Jersey to install smart meters. I think when you look at some, there's some other benefits for customers to have these meters. One of them is the quicker outage detection. So whenever we have a large storm, one of the things that is always an issue towards the end of that storm is finding customers that have single outages, finding what we call nested outages. We have to call customers, is your power on? Being able to actually know the status of the meter during a storm event significantly shortens our restoration, and it shortens the cost of the restoration. I think the other thing that is really worth mentioning is, every customer will have access to their own usage data. And when they'll be able to see their interval usage every 15 minutes, they'll actually also be able to set usage alerts that they can personalize, that if they're trying to manage their electric usage, this gives them the ability to do that. It gives them the ability, if they're seeking to participate in certain energy efficiency programs, they can have that data on our website now. They can email that data to an energy efficiency company and look for some of the different programs to help them reduce their own consumption. So some of those.
When you say energy efficient, you mean outsourced?
When you say energy efficient, you mean outsourcing it, getting away from public service to a third party?
No, what I'm saying is maybe there is, they're looking at, um, they may look and say, hey, you know, I, uh, I want to have, I want to participate in a program for rebate for more efficient air conditioner. I can look at my usage on a hot day and see that over time it's been going up. So it's not the purchasing of electricity from PS. It's actually participating in energy efficiency programs that are sponsored by the utility and the state. So it's those insights uh that, you know, bring down if we're, you know, if we're talking about being green, the need to generate less electricity is also a, a positive step for being green.
Uh, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Dom, uh, the commissioners asked most of the questions I had except the opt-out fee.
Yes.
Are, are any municipalities uh requ- have requested from BPU about waiving the opt-out fee?
Um, I cannot speak to what uh any municipalities have spoken to the BPU about. I can tell you that right now, um, PSCNG does not have the ability to individually waive the opt-out fee or waive the opt-out fee for let's say a town.
But there could be a possibility of us requesting from the BPU for our municipality. You'd try, right?
I would say that there's always a chance, right? So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be able to say that, no, you can't pick up the phone and give them a call. Um, certainly that is well within, uh, well within your rights as the mayor to do that.
Uh, I, I, I just want to open it up for our residents to ask some questions.
Mayor, can I ask one, one more question? So would you represent to us here this evening that your smart meters are no more intrusive on the lives of our people, okay, than smartphones and or television, smart TVs are?
You're asking my opinion or public services opinion?
Well, you're here representing public service. I'll take both.
So, uh, yeah, I'll take both. Um, I think anything that we do digitally leaves a digital footprint. So whether it's on your phone, whether it's a movie you ordered, um, you know, it's my understanding that you're leaving a digital footprint. I think here what you're, um, here we're still gaining your, uh, the ability to do a lot of these other benefits that I spoke about. The customer's gaining their ability to have much greater insights into their own usage. And I think again, I'll come back to the very key point that the Board of Public Utilities made clear. This is the customer's data that cannot be monetized by the utility. The utility cannot send that data to a third party, only the customer. So I will say that, um, I do think that gives the customer control of their information.
So then you believe it is less intrusive than these other devices?
I would say that I'm not sure that unless I read the fine print with Comcast or Netflix that I have full control over my data there.
Right, right. Well, because we all know that, you know, if you're, if you're talking about something, you know, and you have your phone on and you pick up your phone, funny, you know, that, that, that Sears lawnmower pops up on your phone and it's like, where did this come from?
No, you're, you're absolutely right.
So that, I was just curious as to whether or not you felt that your meters were less intrusive.
And, and given the example, if we're going to compare it to Siri as you did, I would say that we're just recording your usage. We're not listening to you.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, uh, we're going to open up for some residents' questions. So anybody like to address Mr. Dom tonight? And let's, let's keep it to questions and not, not statements. All right? Come up, Mrs. Bazza, come up, state your name. Uh, Sessi Bay, we have the hand mic for, for Mr. Dom and we'll leave the mic and the podium for our residents.
Maria Bazza, 209 Highfield Lane.
Never.
I have a, a question. Last week I was pulling into my niece's driveway on Washington Avenue and they were.
Did you begin to the mic as you're coming?
And they were installing smart meters. The gentleman came over to my car thinking I was the homeowner. He had a helmet that was so thick and a plastic over his head. And I said to him, why do you have this helmet on? And he said, well, because these things cause a lot of damage. Why does, does somebody from public service have a helmet and they, and the homeowner, we're, we're going to go back and forth in front of these without helmets?
So I.
Maybe you would issue us homes.
So I, I can answer that question for you. So, um, the reason that when you see our installers wearing, we call it as a personal protective equipment. The helmet, shield, fire retardant shirt, gloves. Um, it's not, yeah, the big gloves on. Um, it's not because of anything that's inside the meter. It's the fact that when we go and remove a meter from a home to change it, we take the cover off. Um, there is always an opportunity for an electric flash when we're doing that. Meaning, uh, we're going to touch 2.3 million meters, many of which have never been touched since they've been installed. And there's a lot of, um, it can be issues inside the meter where uh something could break off. The wire could be corroded. And if there happens to be a flash because something makes contact, that individual could be at significant risk. So when you see uh our folks wearing that personal protective equipment when they're at your meter, you may see them doing that when they're in a bucket, working on a line. It's to protect them from the potential of an injury. So it, it's nothing to do with uh anything that's coming out of the meter.
That's not what he told me.
What's that?
That's not what he told me.
Okay.
Uh, and he said that they, I mean, a lot of, well, he used to work.
Okay. That's not part of our training to, uh, to put that in there. But I can tell you that is the reason for the personal protective equipment.
I don't think it makes the homeowner feel very good when you see a public service man wearing all this equipment and then you're putting it in my house.
And, you know, it's a, it's a very fair comment that you're making. And actually, when I go back and a, a, a meeting with our vendors uh all week, that's one of the things I think we can incorporate into the training is if there is a question as to why are you, you know, wearing all this equipment? To be able to explain um to our customers that there's a potential for uh a, a flash. And uh, so it's very fair and I, I appreciate your feedback.
Anybody else wish to address Mr. Dom tonight?
Joan Rubino, 48 North Road. Uh, the majority of the industry studies about the effects of cell towers, I know this is a little off topic, but it pertains. They found no problems with the cell towers. Uh, they said people were not, in the area were not affected by them. However, independent studies showed a different story. Um, I do not trust, we have here, who? Uh, the Health, uh, World Health Organization and they say that these uh, stuff, uh, smart meters are safe. I don't trust them. Personally, I don't trust big, big business and the government. They lie all the time. Uh, and an example would be the COVID situation. I always bring that up. They said two shots and you're good to go. Masks were essential. Uh, six feet apart, absolutely necessary. Lockdowns for long periods were a great thing. All of them turned out to be absolutely cool. That's, that's where I'm coming from. Uh, now the US telecommunications and industries spent nearly $24 billion on political lobbying and uh they got 247, 81 uh antenna sites approved by the government. Uh, so you see money does talk. And now you know how all these congressmen get so rich. Um, I, I just think that there are no real advantages if, outside of informing public service that there is a problem in a certain area. Even that, when lights go out, I'm on my phone instantly to let the police know. So I, I don't think that is a really sound reason for smart meters. There was a couple of other things you mentioned. It's hard to hear everything, even though the acoustics are greatly improved. Um, it, it's a little difficult, so I might be stepping out of line here. Um, I would like to know the number of bursts. You were talking about that uh per day from these smart meters. How many bursts?
It's uh, it's six.
Thick?
It's every four hours.
Yeah, that I wasn't sure. Okay. Um, yeah, you answered some of the other questions, but I disagree with the results about no health risks. There's numerous studies showing there are many health risks to smart meters. And um, I just think they're, they're dangerous. Uh, I know you disagree. You might not. But being a company person, um, the, oh, things about opting out, you said it costs $12 a month. That's for every, is there no initial thing?
No, so there's no initial fee. However, there, if we had already installed the meter and then you uh called up and said you would like it changed back.
Right.
There's a one-time $45 fee.
That's one of my.
Yeah. So there was a one, uh, there was a one-time $45 fee. The other thing to keep in mind also is the opt-out fee will not start till the project is over. So what we wanted to do is be as equitable as we could. If you were one of the first folks to get a meter or, or we were going to deploy a meter and you said you wanted to opt out, we didn't think it would be correct that you would pay the $12 all through the project. And then the folks that are the last ones to get their meter and opt out didn't have to pay it. So there's, no one's paying any opt-out fees till our project is over.
Okay. And how long would it take before the whole town is?
A, uh, anticipate that it would be the end of this year, the beginning of next year, but we would be complete.
Uh, you know, I did want to ask a question to, for the mayor. Uh, how come the residents weren't notified of this meeting? Is there some reason? Because uh people have no idea what smart meters are. When I first came to the meeting and mentioned it, none of you were aware of what they were. So how do you expect people who are even having them installed to know what they're about?
Mrs. Rubino, we obviously, you know, notice our meetings, right? Mr. Dom is on the agenda and, you know, we thought, you know, we'd like to hear from him first before we put anything else out there.
Well, I just thought it would be a good idea for citizens to have the opportunity if they felt like coming to a meeting to see what it was about. It would have been very.
We've, we've had, uh, you know, publicity on our meeting uh from, you know, a month and a half ago too. So, you know, there's, I haven't received any calls from.
Publicity.
It's happened to Nutley had a big article on it.
Oh, I, I saw that. Yeah. But that was just one.
Unfortunately, that's all the news we get these days.
All right. Um, all right. I think that's, I, I just disagree with you about the, uh, a health risks involved with, with um this project. I think there, there are many.
Okay.
And um, you say that the poles have the, they collect the information. Now that radiation, how far does that travel on, on these poles and pole? Uh, from what my understanding is that they, it travels quite a distance.
Uh, bring it on. About a mile.
And none of this radiation affects the people on the ground?
And we believe that it's safe.
You don't know for sure.
Uh, ma'am, what we do is we follow the, 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 the government agencies that provide the testing and provide the information. We work with our Board of Public Utilities.
Um, as I said, I really don't trust big business and Big Pharma is one of the points I will have to be perfect. Especially at this time, but um, it, they're not to be trusted with all due respect.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Rubino. Anybody else like to uh ask any questions tonight?
Bet you she has a jail bounty or T-shirt.
My name is Lynn Costello and I'm back again to just, um, I apologize. I meant to get here sooner at the very, very beginning. I, I couldn't get here, so I didn't hear everything that you said. Um, so I'm just kind of taking notes based on what I did here first. You said at one point that we are required to read analog meters. That is if the person has opted out, the customer has opted out and still has the analog meter that PSCNG is required to read analogs. What, uh, what do you mean by required? Who is or what is requiring you to read, to come out and to read these analogs?
Well, it's the same, it's the same requirement that we've had even before the program. We're obligated to read the customer's meter to get an accurate read, to produce uh an accurate bill for the customer.
Okay. Um, so let me rephrase that. Uh, I want to know what agency or what statute or what, uh, I don't know, what, who or what is requiring you, okay, is requiring PSCNG to come out and read the meters? Who is obligating PSCNG or requiring PSCNG?
I believe it's New Jersey Administrative Code, but I cannot quote the statute off the top of my head. Is it 48? Yeah.
Code 48? And what does code 48 say? What are the words? Just in New Jersey. Okay. Okay. Um, because when I was here before, what I had suggested, and of course it was not necessarily that I originated the idea uh, that the customer would take a picture of the meter at that moment in time, at the end of the month or whenever, and then send it to PSCNG. Thereby, uh, just relieving PSCNG of the responsibility and the cost involved of coming to read the meter. Therefore, as I see it, that would be a good compromise. You're getting the, the reading and we then don't have to pay the opt-out fee.
So there's, um, I can give a little color to that. Um, even, and we do allow customers today to send in a picture of their meter. We do. Um, but I think, you know, what is probably not apparent is there's somebody at the other end that needs to open that email. Somebody needs to download the picture. It needs to get sent over to our billing department. Someone in our billing department needs to read that meter off the picture and input that into our billing system to create the bill. So I, I, I can't represent that the mere fact that you send in a picture um of your meter, that it isn't, that, that, that doesn't relieve the work that it takes to get that uh meter reading into our system. Somebody's still processing that. In fact, they're probably doing a little more work than the meter reader who walks past your house and puts it in his processor, her processor. And then everything auto, uh, everything flows through our system at that point. So I understand what it may look like, but there's just a little more going on in the background. But I appreciate the suggestion.
Well, then if, if with my analog, somebody is coming by and taking a picture of it or whatever they do and they send that information, the company is still having to process it. Somebody has to be there to, you know, record it and receive it and post it and all that. And.
That is not really, just to interrupt you, when the meter reader walks past and they physically key in your meter reading, at that point, there's no other human that touches that to produce your bill. It flows through our system. So, um, it, and the meter reader is not actually taking a picture of your analog meter. They're actually keying in what the, the index is. And then there's no other human intervention. There's significant. There's significantly more human intervention um for someone taking a picture and sending it in. So I, I just have to politely disagree with you.
Well, okay, you're, you're listing things, but you're really not giving me specifics. You're not giving me cost, you know, the cost of uh my sending in the picture of the uh, the analog reading versus the smart meter um costs of processing and, and so forth. You know, that, that would, that would be more convincing to see the actual cost side by side to the consumer. Because right now, it's, it's just um, it, it's just a the way I look at this $12, first of all, it's an arbitrary fee. What's to say that in a month or in a year, you raise it to $15 or $20?
So we don't have the ability to do that without approval from the Board of Public Utilities. We put that fee in uh when they asked us to file the plan. Um, the utility just cannot arbitrarily say we're going to charge more money for that. If we have a uh reason where we believe it is costing us more money, we could go back to the Board of Public Utilities and, and present that information. I can also say that it works the other way. That if we find out when we go through a rate case, that it's costing us less than what we originally calculated. The Board of Public Utilities would expect us to lower that to just only be what the cost is to do that work. So that fee could change in the future, but it could also go down.
Usually it stay, it goes, when it goes up, it stays up, but you know, um, how many people are on the board? How many uh board members make that decision for all of us out here?
I believe there's five commissioners on the board, but I'd have to go, yeah, that's information on the Board of Public Utilities website. You'd be able to locate.
And who oversees the public utility?
The Board of Public Utilities, the regulators are oversight body.
So they regulate themselves?
Uh, I think I might have missed, I, so I think I misunderstood your question. Um, the Board of Public Utilities oversees the utilities in New Jersey. Um, the oversight of the Board of Public Utilities.
Yeah, state legislature. So what does that mean? Uh, that uh, state legislature, how does, how does that work?
Mrs. Costello, could you kind of keep your questions, excuse me, you keep the questions to the meters because they, they're experts on meters. They're not all experts on the way government works and so.
Okay, I was just trying to, um, I maybe I got off a little bit. So um, I guess my point is that this opt-out fee would be, from my perspective as a, as a customer, very hard to eradicate to, to, because it's all, you know, been regulated and um you're, if you choose to opt out, you have to pay and that's it. And you don't even know if that fee is going to be the same the next year or the next month, which I don't think is fair to the customer.
I could tell you, Mrs. Costello, that, that we're going to put in a request to the Board of Public Utilities to see if we can get that fee waived.
I, I do appreciate that.
I don't know how successful we'll be, but we're going to put, we're going to put in the request.
Well, I think what might aid you is I think I gave you a flyer that showed there were 12 states and two districts in other states that have opted out the fee. So that, that might be, you know, uh, uh, helpful for you. You, you said that the radiation is, if I got this right, 2.4 gigahertz. What scientific studies show that this radiation that's being emitted, that's being pulsed from the smart meters is at levels that do not affect the body uh, or the, the air, or even things below, three feet below the ground. What scientific studies can you point to that I can reference that I?
So what I would point back to, and I don't know if you were here when I mentioned it, is we're filing the um Federal Communication Commission and OSHA. And OSHA, they've, uh, these meters meet their requirements, that admission. So we're, we are following the governing body for that.
So under the FCC, is there a, a, a place that I can go to? Like, like I just go into smart meters?
I would not be able to help you there. I'm sure you'd have to go on their website and, and look. I'm sorry, I don't have the link to that.
See here. You said the compounding effect. I think several people were, were interested in this compounding effect. I, I can't understand why if my meter or somebody else's meter is, is giving out radiation, somebody else's meter is giving out radiation. I'm not an engineer, but I just don't see how you wouldn't have a compounding effect i- in, in the environment. Because the, the, the studies that I've looked at, it's bothering the bees, the birds, uh, people supposedly. There's a, they're studying connections between the radiation that's being pulsed out, not just with the smart meters, but with cell towers and baby monitors and microwaves and all this other stuff. So it's a cumulative thing, it would think with, within, outside your house, especially inside your house. You know, so um, I'm, I'm concerned about that. I, I feel that common sense says to me, it is a compounding effect. I can't prove it, but I just throw that out there that um, it's a concern. I've read so many studies now where um bona fide scientists have studied the effect of radiation. Um, I mean, so I'm not just drawing this like out of my head exactly. Um, I, cancer, you know, um, I, I found this one. I didn't have this one the last time I was here.
Mrs. Costello, can we, can we ask Mr. Dom questions? And let's try to limit our statements tonight.
Okay. Um, you, if I have this correct, uh, if I'm understanding this correctly, you said what happens inside the home, that data or even the radiation off the TV screen and the, and the cellphone that they may have and the baby monitor and all of that inside the house, plus the radiation that comes through the wall from the meter, all of that inside the house, is the customer's concern and is?
No, I didn't. I, I did not mention that or make any statement about any type of who's concerned those things were. I think what I did say, and I don't know if this is where it's getting mixed up, is
The data?
The data, not any of the, um, not any of the RF or anything like that. So the data that is produced by the meters is owned by the customer. The regulating body, the BPU is very clear. The utility cannot monetize that data. We cannot sell your data. The only way someone else um would be able to have your data is if you gave explicit permission and you provided that data and the permission to them. So I, I don't know if maybe we just got mixed up about what we were talking about there.
In the letter that I was sent originally, they did not say that the uh customer has to give the consent. Uh, they didn't talk about that.
Okay.
Consent and maybe that should be in the letter, you know.
We'll take that back.
That should be in the letter. If w- why do you need radiation in the, in the, in the smart meter? I mean, the analog gives the PSENG information, you know, a usage. Why do you need radiation to um, to get additional more information, like which appliances are being used and how often and when they're being used? Why do you need radiation to do that?
So I'm not an electrical engineer or scientist. I can tell you that the analog meters measure electricity mechanically. They do not produce any of the type of interval data and they don't communicate. So the AMI meters, to be able to provide the usage information and to be able to communicate, use electronics and solid-state components and they use a radio. Um, but I can't speak to uh, you know, why that is producing the radiation or things like that. So, but I can just tell you that an analog meter um doesn't have the ability to communicate. It does not have the ability to provide interval data, doesn't have the ability to tell us when you're out or when you're restored. So if the, if that is a byproduct of the technology that um produces that information, um, I would assume that that's why it's in there. But to be clear, I'm not an electrical engineer or a designer of the meters.
If, if in my home, um, I'm getting the radiation, not only from, you know, the baby monitor and all these other things in the home, but also the smart meter, I know from my research that I can reduce the radiation that's, that I'm, you know, that's surrounding me in my home. I would have to buy those things. I would have to buy shields and, and whatever other things are available. Um, wouldn't it be um, wouldn't it be a better uh compromise uh, uh, for PSENG to say, we'll, we will uh rescind the $12 fee and go and buy the shields and the this and the that that you're going to need to reduce it, especially if you have children in the house, babies in the house. Um, wouldn't that be a more, uh, wouldn't PSENG show that they're more compassionate? That if they do have to use the radiation, that they can at least help the customer uh protect the family better?
Well.
Or I, is PSENG concerned with the customer uh protecting himself? And might that rescinding of that $12 plus fee be a way of allowing that customer to have, to use that money and uh, and, and buy things?
Well, as I said earlier, right, we are not in a position to rescind the fee for the cost that it takes to come out and read the meter. What every customer's individual choice that they do relative to what you were speaking to is really that customer's individual choice. Uh, PSENG is not in a position to start purchasing on behalf of customers. Uh, those, those types of things. Um, we don't have approval to do that. Uh, and I, you know, I think ultimately it's every customer's choice. And again, I will come back to that PSENG believes based on uh the bodies that approve the use of the meters that they are safe. So I, I don't know that we'd be in a position to say, we believe these meters are safe, but here's a product that we're going to give you or a product you can buy um that, you know, uh, may reduce something that you're concerned about.
Well, not that PSENG would suggest the product, but that the customer could, could research it himself or herself. Wouldn't, would it, would it then uh be a good idea if PSENG said, we recognize that we are using radiation to get a, I don't know, uh, a, a better readout, whatever. And then, and then say, uh, but we realize that cumulative radiation from all different things in the home, not all our problem, but here, here's, here's what you could do if you wanted to reduce the radiation within the home, at least to make the customer aware that that is a possibility, that is an option, and not mention any particular things that they could buy or use. But just to say, um, uh, we, we would, we would like to make you aware that you could prevent or reduce, not prevent, but reduce. Um, and it, so then we would see that PSENG is involved, is, is, is compassionately concerned um about that issue, because it is an issue. I mean, I, I, I have volumes of stuff where many, many uh, states, countries, since even like 30 years back, are concerned about the radiation. Um, so your smart meter just adds to it, i- is what I'm saying, because it does come through the walls. Okay, ca- can PSENG do that? Can, can they consider that of putting that in their letter? Um, putting, putting, putting that in the letter that they send out? Um, if you uh, if you wish to re- reduce uh, or, you know.
Yeah, um, I think respectfully, I would tell you that I believe that would be um a bit of an overreach for the utility to then um start creating an opinion or trying to manage other devices that we're not responsible for in your home, so.
It's not an opinion. I mean, there, there is radiation, that, that is a fact, but I, I understand, you mean.
Yeah, it's, we're, we would be uh stepping well beyond our regulated reach to do something like that.
Okay, um. I'm just looking through my notes here, please.
Ma'am, like she's looking for her notes. I, I have one other question if you don't mind. So you kind of hung me up before when you said, do you want my personal opinion or my business opinion? So the first question I have for you, do you have one of these meters in your own home? I do. Do you have kids? I do. That live on their own? Do they have the meters? I have a, a daughter that lives at my house that we have a meter and I'd have to check in the apartment complex that my oldest daughter lives in if she has a meter yet. Right, so I mean, if they're in your home. They're in my home. And I guess you do have a little mixed emotions about all the radiation that's around and the, and the prints that are left behind. Like Commissioner Tucci was saying before, you know, I mean, loo- look, you know, we're not scientists. We're not, you know, radiologists, all that stuff. I mean, in your opinion, as a human being. Yeah. I mean, you think these things are safe in these people's houses? I do. Thank, thank you.
Um, you were saying before that the customer's data, they own their data. Okay, um. But uh, I didn't get the part about um the digital footprint, but we're leaving us, you're leaving us with.
So I, that was in response to um one of the other commissioners' questions, so. And it was a, I think it was a general statement about any type of, I think we were discussing any something electronically or you're on the internet, there's always some sort of um footprint. What I would say, if I'm drawing a correlation to our meters is your usage is your footprint. How much did you use in the last 15 minutes? And that usage is something that the BPU is very clear that you own that data. The utility can't monetize that data and that data can't be, we would, uh, that, that you would have to provide explicit consent for someone else to use that data.
Okay. All right, okay, I understand. Um, what is time variant pricing mean?
Time, uh, a time variant pricing or time of use rates? Is that what you're referring to? So time of use rates are say, basically saying at different times during the day, you would be charged uh a different rate for your usage. So if it was peak time, um, there are other, there are utilities that have charged a higher rate at a peak usage time to encourage customers to uh reduce their usage.
Okay, so um, all right, I, I, I get that. Um, the smart meters. How? are they using the grid?
When you mean?
The, the grid that's handles electricity, our.
Okay. Yeah. So the smart meters transmit through a radio frequency. The meters speak to a router. A router speaks to what's called a, a data collector. That does not travel through the wires that you see on your street. That's a radio frequency. However, the routers and the radio and, and the data collectors, they're powered by the electricity that would be in the grid, meaning a router is receiving power from the street light that it's connected to. But the data, the information, it, it doesn't travel through the electric lines that like your voltage does that powers your appliances, if that was your question.
So if the grid goes down, let's say, I don't know, Russia does something with the grid or, or it just goes down, it's, it's faulty for any reason. How does that affect the smart meter or even the analog meter?
So if we were to lose power and we can just say that we lost power, probably we don't need to figure out how we lost power, right? Let's say we had a storm. So if you lose power, your meter produces what's called a last gasp message that would say, I don't have power. That would go to one of our routers. The router has, I believe it's an eight hour battery to then be able to transmit back to our data collectors that you lost power. There is at some point, if all the power's gone and the battery is used up, then it's not communicating again till power is restored to it.
Do the smart meters use more electricity from the grid than, oh, all right. Thanks. I, I'm sorry. Do the smart meters use more electricity from the grid than the analogs do?
They would, they would use, it's, I think it's like less than a watt. And the reason that they use more is because the analog meter doesn't use any electricity because it's a mechanical meter. So there's no consumption in it. So it, it always has to use more because the analog meter is using nothing. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Lou Costello and I live at 15 St. Paul's Place. My question to Mr. Don.
Uh, Dom.
Dom. In two, in 2019, we had a, we had a smart meter, put gas meter into the basement. We had installed in the basement of our home, a gas meter. Okay. After all of this research that we had, that the town was going to put smart meters in, we contacted and we were in, you're in touch with three people that called us. They said the analog meter is a newer version. It doesn't have a transmitter in it. I said, according to our studies and research, it does have a transmitter in it and it can be turned on remotely. That being said, I am concerned health wise. Like I said to the commissioners the last time, in 2019, when this meter was installed, I was 74 years old at that time. Never had any heart problems or heart conditions or anything like that. Six months after this meter was installed in our home, I went to the doctor and he told me I had a fib. Never in my whole life did I have this. They gave me a lot of reasons, but like I said to the commissioners, I went through all kinds of tests to get to, to find out what's going on. The only thing they found was an irregular heartbeat. My body's strong, everything is strong. Now, after this research was done, I said, well, all through the country, they're talking about atrial fibrillation and all of these heart conditions and cancers and everything like that. That is my concern, the health issue. Of course, I don't want to pay extra fees or anything, but recently I was told that the gas company, gas and electric company has increased the pressure in our gas lines. And those meters in the basement are not supposed to be there anymore. They're supposed to be outside because of the higher pressure in that thing. So what is, what is, what is your answer to that is that, because this person knows what he's talking about, but.
So to be honest with you, I'm trying. So you're saying that they increased the gas pressure in your street?
That's, that's what I was told. It was all, all through the, all through the towns that the pressure was increased in our lines. And those meters in the basement are not supposed to be there. They're supposed to be outside.
Yeah.
I know, but a few years ago, and mayor, you can correct me here, but maybe it was maybe 10 years ago. Maybe it was about 10 years ago. There was a plan to increase the throughput of gas through the major gas lines into Nutley. One of those gas lines share a right of way with us at a substation on Cook Road. That I think at that time, the mayor and some other elected officials got together and they bought the plan and that plan was put to bed. That plan was since resurrected. But what you may be talking about is what we call our GSMP program. And for, that's the Gas System Modernization Program. And what we do with that program is yes, we do increase the pressure and the throughput in the gas main. And yes, the plan calls for us to put all the meters outside if we can, except when we're dealing with a historic house or some look or if the residents don't like it. But that plan calls for two things. One, to increase the pressure throughput and then put the meter outside. And one additional thing there is that we'd also put a valve. And it's just, it's almost like an excess flow valve where if the gas pressure goes beyond a certain level, it shuts the gas off. It's a safety issue. So that may be what you heard and that may be what you're talking about.
So, so the answer is that meter is not supposed to be in the basement anymore. Is that right?
Well, I don't know exactly. I mean, for that, you'd have to give me exact addresses.
Okay.
I've done a lot of work.
Okay.
Done a lot of streets. But if you tell, if you give me the exact address, I, I can have someone checking.
Okay.
If the meter is not supposed to be there.
Okay.
No, I, I understand. I appreciate you. I appreciate your, I appreciate your.
But, but again, you know, if, if, replace the gas main, we'll also replace the service.
Mm hmm.
We'll also replace.
Okay.
Everything will go down.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking only of safety. That's, that's my issue. Health issue and safety. That's my, that's my concern. It's my concern. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I have a couple more questions based on citizens' comments. This is kind of, might be a shot in the dark. Do you happen to know how many residents in Nutley have opted out of the smart meters?
I don't, but I can get that information. I don't have that off the top of my head.
And then.
So state, I can share statewide numbers. We're almost 800,000 users installed. We will over 3600 hotels.
But I can get, we can go into the system and get you a specific information for Nutley.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And so it's in the letter that we send to the customer when we talk. Yeah, I know we've sent multiple letters. Have you had the, have you had the meter installed yet? Well, I know you haven't, but, right. But you may not be scheduled yet. So when you, when we, 45 days before we go to change any meter, all those customers get a very specific letter letting them know what they can do. Or is it in? We'd like Commissioner Kelly finish his questions.
So we, we receive a monthly bill. Why then do we need the smart meters to communicate with the data processing center six times a day? If we're just getting a monthly bill?
Well, that provides the customer the opportunity to see their usage in near real time. So you would actually be able to go in and tomorrow morning, let's say, see what you used the day before. So if you're looking to understand your bill, you're looking for energy efficiency programs. Having the ability to see that in near real time is a benefit that a lot of customers are interested in.
Is there an app?
Well, yeah. So the way that you would get to the, to the portal, it has not been deployed yet. It's going to be deployed this summer is if you have a PSENG My Account. Once we deploy this portal, you'll sign into your PSENG My Account and then you'll see a link to see your energy usage and then you'll go to the portal.
And customers opt out of having it every day, six times a day and just say, I just want it once a month, just.
No.
So you, you also said that there's third party data aggregators or data interpreters. Can you, you, like you say, you, you guys don't use, but can a customer get access to one of those data interpreters and interpret your data or would they need to get the raw data from that?
They would be able to send the data from the portal to that aggregator.
Okay. And then just to piggyback on Commissioner Petracca's question, that you, you yourself have a smart meter, but what about your colleagues here that you brought with you? Do they use smart meters or are they still on analog? Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Rubio.
The advantage of people have been able to view their usage, the whole nine yards. How many people do you think really do that? You said that 36,000 people were, had the meters and, or whatever it was and 3,000 opted out. So how many people are that concerned about their bill?
So just to be clear, we said we have about 36,000 people have opted out. We have not yet deployed. That is one of our use cases this summer. We will be reporting to the BPU, the amount of customers that do log in every month and look at their data. It's information we need to provide to the BPU. So, but like I said, I can't speak and deploy that yet. So once, once that is deployed, that information will be.
Is that people don't even know what a smart meter is and they're going to be checking you forward? I find that really hard to follow.
Okay. Yeah. Well, no, I'm not going to let you, I'm not going to let you say that I agree, but what I will say is folks that are interested in vehicles and things like that have a very big interest in seeing their electric usage. Folks that want to put solar panels on their homes, they have a very big interest in what their electric usage is. And I'm not going to deny, there are some people out there that aren't interested in it. But it's something we want to provide to folks that are interested in saving money, reducing their usage. So. But I won't, you're not wrong. I'm sure not everybody, because everybody doesn't, is a, we can't say everybody for anything. But we feel it's something that if someone does want to use it, that, that we want to provide it to them. You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for our public service reps?
Just, just so I'm, I'm clear. So the public will have access to the raw data so they can interpret it themselves through the portal.
Absolutely. So you'll have, when you log onto the portal, you'll have the ability to download it into Excel. You'll be able to take that data out. You have, you have the ability to send that data to someone else via email.
Thank you.
Well, maybe one more question.
Hello.
Harvard, 260 Washington app. This is my first meeting and I'm, I'm curious, how did this all come about? The Public Utilities Commission just wanted to put smart meters on everybody's home. Why?
So, uh, smart meters started being deployed in the United States in 2006. So as each state has deployed them, I, I think that, I'm not going to personally speak for the Board of Public Utilities, but I think having the ability to have the insights into your energy usage to be able to see how you can save, participate in energy efficiency programs. A very big interest in improved storm response and improved. Well, I'll take that as a compliment for PSENG. Thank you. But that is, that is one of the, that is, you know, one of the many benefits. New Jersey is about the 47th state to do it. I know Massachusetts doing it now. Connecticut is going through it. So this is a, we believe it's a proven technology that provides these benefits.
I don't think I've ever checked my usage in over years. I got my bill. It was higher and it was higher and lower, whatever.
I appreciate that.
No reason, but the smart ones in your home, just because you were concerned about us checking our usage?
Excuse me?
Why would the smart meters employed? I don't understand. This is all 5G, right?
No, it's not 5G at all. It's, it's an RF signal. What was it? Yeah. So it's a, it's a radio, it's a radio signal. It's not, it's not 5G. It's not cellular. Yeah. Oh, it's nine, it's not, it's less than 900 megahertz. Yeah.
So with all the money you're saving by not having people coming out to your meters, our rates are going to go down?
Actually, the safe, well, actually the savings from the operational savings, right? When that expense leaves the utility, when the utility goes in for a rate case to say, hey, this is what it costs to provide safe electric, safe and reliable electric and gas, when those costs are out of the business, they don't get put into rates. So when we go into a rate case, we, we then basically say, hey, we have a revenue requirement to run the utility. When those expenses leave the utility, they don't make it into a revenue requirement. And if they're not in a revenue requirement, they don't get put into rates. So there is a savings and it, it will get passed on. I understand. Uh, the data, I believe it's about seven years in our meter data management system. No.
Right. Fred and I thank you for coming out and listening to our concerns and answering our residents' concerns. Would like to recognize Everton Scott, our longtime liaison who's moved up the ladder. But he's here tonight. So Everton, welcome to Nutley again. And thank you all for coming out tonight. We appreciate it.
Well, I mean, you have my mail information.
We have any further questions, I'm sure I can get them to you and you'll get me back some answers.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's move on to reports. Commissioner Petracca.
Yes, Hector. I have my public safety report.
I have my public safety report, which entails fire EMS municipal court and the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill is for April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Public affairs ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Revenue and finance, three million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents. Public safety, eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-one cents. Public works, eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and nineteen cents. Parks and public property, seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. The uh, payroll as of Friday, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Regular payroll total, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Overtime payroll total, thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Total payroll, nine hundred and two thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-five cents for a grand total of four million, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Uh, public comments on agenda items only. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Anybody would like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements, Commissioners.
John, why don't you go first? I know we have the animal thing, so I'll tag on to that.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Evans. Uh, this Sunday is our first pause in the park event. Thank you, Commissioner Tucci, for letting us use Kingsland Park. It's going to be from ten to two. Uh, we have about twenty different animal vendors ranging from animal hospitals to pet groomers to animal shelters. Uh, some animal shelters will bring kittens and, and dogs to be adopted. If you're interested in being adopted, adopting a pet, uh, the, it is going to be outside, so there is a rain date and I do believe it's calling for rain this Sunday. And if the, if there is rain, it'll be rescheduled for the rain date, which is April thirtieth, the following week. Uh, and if you do end up adopting a pet at, at that event or, oh, and by the way, your furry friends are all invited to come too. It's, it's a, a very inclusive event to really celebrate our furry friends. Uh, and if you do end up adopting a pet that day, uh, you can bring them or to the rabies clinic, which we're doing in conjunction with Commissioner Evans' office on Monday. So you get a pet, get the, uh, not annual, but I guess biannual rabies shot.
Triennial.
Well, the, the animal doesn't need to get it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. But we have it everywhere at the rabies clinic, but the animal doesn't need to get the shot every year, every other year. Uh, and you also register your pet with the township in a one-stop shop. And I believe that's, that's all I got going.
Yeah, I was just going to add is that the clerk's office will be there to accept licensing, uh, renew licenses uh, with her staff out to support the, the clinic for the two days.
Bishop Chaka.
Yes, I, I would like to say that unfortunately, about a week ago, our Dunkin' Donuts had an armed robbery on Washington Avenue. And I do have to watch what I can put out there today, but tomorrow we will be coming out with a press release, um, through the Nutley Police Department. But this, at this time, I'd like the Nutley residents and all my fellow colleagues up here that Sea Caucus has charged three of the suspects and have them under arrest at this point. And like I said, in one of the, my former press releases is that this will not be tolerated in Nutley and I will go to the end of the earth myself and exhaust any avenues to make sure that this does not continue in Nutley. So my biggest message to our residents is still, if you see something, call the police department. Don't think that you're bothering us. If there's something suspicious. Unfortunately, we do not have a wall around our town. You know, our crime rate is way down and we do not get too many of these callings of armed robberies or, you know, the, you know, the bigger crimes here in Nutley. And we want to keep it that way, but we can't do it without our residents either. Also, I just want to, um, thank the Nutley Fire Department and Police Department and our E M Ts at somebody very close to me, wouldn't, with a drug issue and the, and the fire department here in Nutley and, you know, some of our stellar people in public safety were able to Narcan that person back and bring them back. And that person is doing quite well at this time and has a second chance on life. And it, and another message to our youth with these drugs that are around today with this fentanyl in them. It is an epidemic. So please heed these words. And if there's parents listening out there or there's any reporters, you know, the drugs of today are very addicting, you know? We, um, unfortunately lost a, a, a young man not too long ago last year that really wasn't a party or was his birthday and he decided that a group decided to have a little party and, you know? I don't know if it was first time trying it, but you would never believe that he could go to this and you know what? He did not make it. So please, um, you know, it really is an epidemic in every town, including Nutley that, you know, these drug dealers, you're not buying these stuff, these things from pharmacists and pharmaceuticals companies. They're, they're not regulated and there's a lot of stuff in it that could really kill you by taking a little bit. So again, thank you to the Nutley Police and Fire. Thank you to, um, to Sea Caucus Police Department for working in conjunction to get these people under arrest. Um, and thank you to, to everybody in public safety for that Narcan, um, event that they had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans.
I'm good.
Uh, I just, uh, we have an event coming up on Saturday. Our compost day will give residents, uh, free compost for their gardens from nine to one in parking lot nine. Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, ordinance number thirty-five fourteen will amend the zoning uh, code of the township of Nutley specifically, chapter seven hundred, uh, three dot B and seven hundred and thirty-nine to prohibit, uh, vape and smoke shops in, in Nutley. Uh, I, I'll read it by title in ordinance to amend and revise chapter seven hundred three B and seven hundred dash thirty-nine zoning of the township of Nutley, uh, of the township code. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise the Nutley Sun together with the notice required, required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three resolutions on for this evening. Uh, the first one is to designate month, the, the, sorry. Uh, designate the month of May, uh, was celebrating the theme of you make a difference. Uh, I generally like to put all of my resolutions on the month prior, uh, so that way we can recognize the entire month. But, uh, May is a busy month, so I'll be doing half now and half at the beginning of, of May, which is the May, our next meeting on May second. Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession. Whereas the depth, breadth, uh, depth and breadth of registered nurses, nursing profession meets the, meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings, including the front line of the pandemic. Whereas American Nurses Association, as the voice of registered nurses in the, in this country, is working to chart a new course for the, for a healthy nation that relies on increasing access to primary and preventative healthcare and a better utilization of all our nation's registered nursing resources. Whereas a professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized and non-hospitalized patients. Whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the, the American population, emerging health challenges and continuing expansion of life sustaining technologies and the explosive growth of whole, home healthcare services. More qualified, whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare cus, cus, consumers in this community. Whereas the cost effective, safe and high quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be increasingly important component of the United States healthcare delivery system. Whereas the global COVID nineteen pandemic has shown the important role nurses play, proving them to be compassionate, innovative and resilient in the face of the biggest public health crisis of this century. And therefore be resolved at the Board of Commissioners in the town of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, along with the American Nurses Association, recognize the month of May, uh, celebrating the twenty twenty-three theme of you make a difference, honoring the varying roles of nurses and their positive impact in our lives. Nurses make a difference as trusted advocates who ensure individuals, families and populations receive quality patient care and services. Nurses make a difference by influencing and shaping health policy decisions that ensure all Americans have access to high quality, affordable healthcare coverage. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Uh, the second one I have on this, this meeting, uh, this month is for mental health and wellbeing. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and wellbeing. Whereas one in five adults and one in six youth experience mental illness each year. Whereas one million, one hundred, two thousand adults in New Jersey have a mental health condition that is more than three times the population of Newark. Whereas in February twenty twenty-one, forty-two point two percent of adults in New Jersey reported symptoms of anxiety or depression. Nineteen point nine percent were unable to get needed counseling or therapy. Whereas on average, one person in the U S dies by suicide every eleven minutes. In New Jersey, seven hundred and seventy-eight lives were lost to suicide and two hundred and thirty-nine thousand adults had thoughts of suicide in the last year. Whereas connecting friend, connecting with friends, family and other individuals and striking up some positive dialogue about mental health can play an important part in ending the stigma around mental health illness. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, citizen share the burden of mental illnesses and has the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Whereas the, the organization Mental Health America has chosen look around, look within as their twenty twenty-three theme, asking individuals to consider every part of our environment where we, we are born, live, learn, work and play and how it affects our mental health and wellbeing. Whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has had profound, profound impacts on mental health of people of all ages. And now more than ever, it is critical to reduce the stigma around mental health struggles that commonly prevents individuals from seeking help. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the town of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim, proclaim May and call upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, schools in the township of Nutley to recommit to our, our community, increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and step, and the, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate accessible services for all people with it, with mental illnesses at all stage. I just would like to remind everyone that a year or two ago, this, this entire Board of Commissioners unanimous, we made the township of Nutley a stigma-free town. Uh, so I, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Uh, the last one I have on this, for this evening is, uh, May is National Stroke Awareness Month. Uh, and this is to raise awareness about stroke. Whereas stroke is a brain attack, cutting off vital blood flow and oxygen to the brain, whereas stroke can happen to anyone at any time, regardless of race, sex or age. Whereas every year, more than seven hundred and ninety-five thousand people in the United States have a stroke. About six hundred and ten of these are our first or new strokes. Whereas strokes kill nearly a hundred and fifty thousand of the eight hundred and sixty thousand Americans who die of cardiovascular disease each year. That is one in every nineteen deaths from all causes. Whereas stroke is a leading cause of serious long-term disability and reduces mobility in more than half of stroke survivors aged sixty-five and older. Whereas during a stroke, every minute counts fast, F A S T. Treatment can lessen the brain damage of a stroke that, that can cause F face. Uh, ask the person to smile. Does it, does one side of the face drop? A, arms. Ask the person to raise both arms. Does one arm drift downward? S, speech. Ask the person to repeat a simple phrase. Is the speech slurred or strange? T, time. If you see any of these signs, call nine one one right away. Whereas many strokes can be prevented through healthy lifestyle changes and working with your healthcare team to control health conditions that raise your risk for stroke. And therefore be resolved that, that by the Board of Commissioners in the town of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the month of May twenty twenty-three be declared as National Stroke Awareness Month and encourage the citizens of the township of Nutley to learn the signs of stroke as sooner a patient receives medical treatment to lower the risk of death or disability. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one resolution, uh, one oh one twenty-three. It's to award a non-fair and open contractor Paul Ricky to help with the preparation of zoning ordinance revisions, uh, as, as for the, for the period, April one, uh, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and it's not to exceed, uh, three thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, uh, that authorizes the mayor and municipal clerk to enter into a contract on a non-fair and open basis in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash five with Ricky planning at the stated rate of a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour and not to exceed three thousand dollars. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Bye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca.
Whereas the township of Nutley has a need for services relating to off-duty employment for the fire for, of fire personnel for the fire EMS related activities. And whereas NJSA forty-eight eleven dash five provides for supportive software, maintenance consultant services and training services for priority computer hardware and software. Whereas the term of this engagement shall be for two years, starting on May first, two thousand and twenty-three, commencing on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, either party can terminate this agreement upon thirty days prior and written notice to the other party. And whereas the administrative fee of no more than eight percent to be collected by visual computer solutions. And whereas there is no cost to the township of Nutley for such services. And whereas the term of this engagement shall commence on the effective date and continue unless terminated by either party. Either party may terminate this agreement upon thirty days prior written notice. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township be authorized to execute such document as necessary to implement this resolution and be further resolved that the resolution shall take effect pursuant to the law. I move it.
Uh, second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans. Okay, uh, Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
So I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, Mayor. Be resolved by Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. For forty-six Terrace Avenue Lacrosse in the amount of one-ten, thirty-three Beach Street, K two hoops in the amount of sixty dollars, thirty-two Rota Avenue for the summer intensive theater. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. That's all I have there. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Nutley Ju, Junior Raider Booster Club, license number twenty-eight, twenty-three, on premises, fifty fifty cash raffle. License number twenty-nine, twenty-three, on premises, merchandise raffle to be held Saturday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Nutley High School Volleyball Booster Club, license number thirty dash twenty-three, on premises, fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Wednesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, applied for community development block grant monies for the year twenty twenty-three via resolution number three, five, eight dash twenty-two on December sixth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the original applications for following projects have been amended due to a change in the census tract. One reconstruction and resurfacing of Coiman Avenue, section one from Bullfield Avenue to Ridge Road. Two reconstruction, resurfacing of Coiman Avenue, section two from Ridge Road to Bloomfield Township border. Whereas the project for twenty twenty-three is being replaced with the following. Reconstruction, resurfacing Sunset Drive, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Now therefore resolve that township Nutley amends its original C, uh, twenty twenty-three C D B G application for the, for funding to reconstruct and resurface Sunset Drive, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Anybody wish to adjust the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, we have a, a reason to go into executive tonight, so I'll take a motion to go into executive for Mr. Bruno.
So move.
Second.
Section eight, whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances recently exist. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley desires to proceed to close executive session and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussions of the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matters to be discussed are contract negotiations. It is anticipated at the time, at this time, that the above stated subject matters will be ratified during the public meeting of the fall to follow or as soon as thereafter, as the reason of discussion that the matters in executive session no longer exist. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Tucci.
He stepped away.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. There'll be no further business. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca. Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Time is eight fifty-three.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.